Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This council meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, October the 7th, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
Councilmember Carnes could not be here with us tonight. Our invitation tonight will be led by Pastor Derek Gardner from Life Springs Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of calling on your name for wisdom and direction as these your servants gather to do the business of our blessed community, the Town of Lexington. In these times of great prosperity yet great uncertainty, we are grateful for the undeniable history of your grace and guidance throughout the decades for our great nation, state, county, and town. We pray as the mayor and council members meet that the words of Proverbs 15:22 would ring true. Plans fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors they succeed. Lord, may you, through your Holy Spirit, give guidance to Mayor Livingston, Mayor Pro Tem Williams, council members Carnes, Lyle, Smith, Allen, and Michaels. You alone know how the decisions they make today will impact our tomorrow. In Jesus, we ask for your peace, protection, and provision on all who serve, protect, and dwell within the Town of Lexington. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And at this time, I'd like to welcome U.S. retired Army Sergeant Scott Craig to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for being here with us tonight. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. At this time, I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Are there any deletions from tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we remove the approval of minutes, I guess, number one, two, and three for work session minutes from March 18th, minutes from August 19th, and the minutes from September 16th, all of 2024.
So we're going to remove all of those. Do we need a motion to do that or just?
Long as more than two, long as two people don't object here, okay?
Okay, so we'll just remove them. Okay? Okay, so at this time, I will give a vision plan update. If you have not been, you should go. The Old Mill Pond Trail is officially open, and it's been packed. The trail is 1.15 miles long and includes changes in elevation, bridges, outlooks, and seating areas that circle the Lexington Mill Pond. It provides an opportunity to enjoy nature in the heart of downtown Lexington as well as panoramic views of the Old Mill. The trail is fully paved and accessible to all visitors, featuring ADA compliant parking and an entrance located next to the Old Mill group deck. Additional parking areas will be opened at two other points along the trail in the future. The vision plan, the trail is just one of our projects. For more information on the projects we're working on, visit lexse.gov. Forgot to do the executive session. I guess I'm going back before I go to the Mayor Pro Tem. Y'all get me off on doing those. Let's see, an executive session. Prior to this meeting, we discussed the following matters. Two routine personnel matters. Contractual issues related to the Old Mill Trail project. Contractual issues related to Middle Springs Road project. And advice regarding agenda items. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Now we'll go back since Ron's keeping me straight over here. Next will be our traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Construction activity continues along South Lake Drive near industrial associated with the new Whataburger restaurant. Roadwork will consist of adding a new right turn lane and median construction to help improve traffic flow in that area. While no lane closures are anticipated, we ask that you continue to exercise caution along this route. Along Middle Springs Road near Sunset Boulevard, construction of a new Guthrie's restaurant will require intermittent lane closures as roadwork continues in this area. Use caution in and around this area as the work continues, please. On the right turn lane on Dwight Ford Way from Sunset Boulevard, that work has resumed, and paving is expected to be complete later this week. Expect possible delays for intermittent lane closures to complete the work. We encourage you to follow the Town of Lexington's social media outlets for traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that needs immediate repair. And this morning, we experienced a water main break at South Lake Drive at Railroad Avenue. Do we have an idea of when that roadway will be back open yet?
Yes, sir. The roadway is open currently. They will have to work on it again in the morning, so there will be closures tomorrow.
Closure again tomorrow, all right? And I guess we'll post it on our Facebook pages when we get through construction.
That's correct. Our Police Department page is the best for updates related to traffic, so we encourage people to look there.
Awesome, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Now we will open the public hearing portion of this meeting. We ask that those that want to speak to please come to the podium, provide your name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and a timer will be set by the clerk, which will sound when three minutes is up. There will be no standing head count of opponents or proponents. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain facts regarding the subject matter on the agenda. Please note, this is only for council information and is not a question and answer session. These guidelines are in place to help the public hearing portion run efficiently and allow all those that wish to speak proper time. With that, is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the public hearings for tonight? And I will list them. Adoption of amendments to the Lexington County Animal Control Ordinance. Anyone like to speak to that? Ordinance to reinstitute a 3% local accommodations tax. Annexation of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-047 located in the 400 block of Cherokee Trail. Thank you. Hearing none, we will move on to our presentations tonight, and our first one will be a presentation tonight for Midland's Technical College for 50 years, their 50-year anniversary. And do we have anybody here? Would you please come forward? Whereas 2024 marks a milestone in this distinguished history of Midland's Technical College as it celebrates the 50th anniversary of its founding on July 1st, 2024, so we're a couple months off of it. Whereas throughout this year, various events have celebrated Midland's Technical College's education, legacy, and tremendous contributions to the community, culminating this month with homecoming activities and festivities for faculty, staff, alumni, and students. And whereas Midland's Technical College is the product of a rich and unique history involving the combination of the Columbia Technical Education Center, Midland's Technical Education Center, and Palmer College in Columbia into a single facility. And whereas accreditation by the Commission on Colleges of the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools allows MTC to provide a variety of educational opportunities that support its missions of human resource development and economic development. And whereas MTC offers more than 100 credit programs of study and strong college transfer program that allow students to take the first two years of bachelor degree at MTC and then transfer to one of the state's four-year institutes. And whereas MTC also provides corporate and continuing education opportunities, records more than 25,000 enrollments annually, and has an estimated annual income, economic impact in excess of $1 billion. And whereas more than 80% of MTC graduates who do not continue their education after graduation are employed in jobs related to their field of studying after gaining the high-quality education and training they need to compete successfully in the marketplace. Whereas MTC's solid foundation in the past and its vision for the excellence in the future together ensure that citizens and students alike will be proud to call MTC their college. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Midland's Technical College is hereby recognized and congratulated upon its 50th anniversary celebration for its educational benefits and economic impact provided to the citizens of the Midlands and the state of South Carolina. And myself, and Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Michaels was honored to be at what we know as Lexington Middle School and joining y'all for y'all's ribbon hanging there. That was a very neat classes and opportunities that y'all have for us right here in the town, too. Thank you so much.
All right. One, two. What did you say a few words if you didn't?
Thank you.
Good evening to council. My name is Debbie Walker. I'm the Vice President for Business Affairs at Midland's Technical College. They call me the Money Lady. We'd like to thank you for your recognition of Midland's Technical College. I am so proud of the part of, I'm so proud to be a part of Midland's Tech and grateful and acknowledgement of the important role the college plays in the lives of so many of your friends and neighbors. 50 years is a long time, and over all those years, Midland's Technical College has made a difference in the lives and the future of our community and our students. We always say that you can get anywhere from here. That's our motto, and they certainly do. Whether that is transferring to four-year institutions, moving careers, moving into careers in health sciences, technical fields, skill crafts, and business workforce, MTC makes their dreams come true. We have been dedicated to this mission for a half-century, and I promise you, we will continue to be alert to the needs of local businesses and to fulfilling the educational aspirations of so many. Thank you once again, and here's to another 50 years. We really and truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is to Lexington One Technology Center, read by Councilmember Todd Lyles for recognizing them for 50-year anniversary.
Madam Mayor, we have someone from Lexington Technology Center. Whereas I was affectionately remembered it as LTC.
LTC.
Super. So I have a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, recognizing Lexington Technology Center for its 50th anniversary. Whereas Lexington County School District One opened Lexington Technology Center in August of 1974, initiating a legacy of preparing students for successful careers and addressing workforce needs in the Lexington community. And whereas during the 2024-25 school year, Lexington Technology Center is marking 50 years of dedication to educational excellence with an anniversary celebration, featuring a series of special events and activities. And whereas the Lexington Technology Center has been instrumental in building generations of excellence, offering robust career and technical education that has benefited thousands of students from Gilbert, Lexington, Pillion, Riverbluff, and White Knoll High Schools, as well as participants in Lexington County School District One's Adult Education Program. Whereas Lexington County School District One continues to provide superior career and technical education programs at Lexington Technology Center and throughout the district, driven by a mission to build our community through career preparation focused on character, creativity, and craftsmanship. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington that Lexington Technology Center is hereby recognized and congratulated for its 50th anniversary and for its lasting dedication to the education and betterment of the Lexington community. Reclaiming the 7th day of October, 2024, signed by Hazel Livingston, Mayor, Town of Lexington. And I will go ahead and say that I had the distinct pleasure of taking the AutoCAD class with Milton Berkey back in 1996, 1997, and walking the long breezeway down to the Lexington Technology Center that we called LTC.
Who want to get the dude?
Put you in the middle with it. Hold me. Come on, Dr. Price. Stand at the end. I'm gonna let you sit in the middle with it. All right, there you go.
All right. One, two. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all make sure you say something.
Appreciate it.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
If y'all are going for it, I mean to say something, I guess I will. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that's with me. They took their, it's kind of hectic outside with a concert, and prayers are with the police forces. They've responded to the call. But thank you for Dr. Price, Superintendent-elect Lexington One, Sandy Vining, Assistant Director, Ryan Panner, Assistant Director, Ms. Elena Miller, our Lead Teacher for Health Science, and Ms. Anna Reeseire, our CT Markings Specialist. Lexington Technology is a very special place, and I've been proud to be part of that for 26 years now, starting in 99, first as a teacher and coach, and then Assistant Director, and now Director. What makes Lexington Technologies Center so special? There's nothing I can say that personally expressed the impact Lexington Technology Center's had on me personally, or on our community as a whole, but I'm going to try. Each morning, as I walk in the building, I'm struck by the grandeur of the two oak trees that stand outside. The image of an oak tree includes in our logo this year, and an oak tree is symbolic of the impact LTC has had on Lexington and Lexington County, our state, and across our nation and globe. When I presented our 50th anniversary to our retiree planning committee, Mr. Lake, the former director, told me the story of an oak tree when LTC opened. Mr. Berry, the first director, had his son and a friend water that oak tree every single day, and he paid them out of his own pocket to do so. These trees have been here since the inception of Lexington Technology Center and frame our entrance. So what makes an oak tree an oak tree, and Lexington Technology Center Lexington Technology Center? When you think of an oak tree, you think of certain characteristics. An oak tree is mighty and strong. It perseveres and has great value. It provides shade and stands out among other trees. These are characteristics of Lexington Technology Center and of our students. Furthermore, an oak tree has a tremendous root system for support. LTC was built on relationships. Those relationships are what make LTC strong. Past and present staff are part of that root system that support and nourish such a majestic tree. Ms. Reeseire and Ms. Miller, both products, and Mr. Panner and Ms. Vining, all products of that system. They have and still continue to nurture the trunk and its limbs. Our business, industry, governmental, and community partners are all vital parts of that root system. They advise us on trends, support our teachers and students, and provide opportunities beyond the classroom. LTC would not be successful without such a strong business, industry, governmental, and community partnership. Our students' parents are also key to the success we've had at LTC. Throughout the years, parents have tremendously, been tremendously supportive of our programs and their students to ensure their success beyond the classroom. Finally, Lexington One leadership, our feeder schools, and our support structures have all invested in our success and ensure our students can learn, grow, and excel. The trunk of an oak tree represents the core of what we do. At Lexington Technology Center, like you said, we believe that career technical education is for all students, and that students are best prepared for the workforce when they combine rigorous core academics with hands-on career and technical learning and skill work as well as work-based learning opportunities. Our mission at LTC is to build our community through career preparation focused on character, creativity, and craftsmanship. Students must have strong character to be successful. They must be able to do, and they must be able to problem solve. Our vision is for all students to be leaders and innovators in his or her community. And finally, the branches and leaves. The branches and leaves represent our students, and if you ride through Lexington, you can look to your left and right, and you will see all the branches and leaves throughout our community. There are numerous healthcare workers at all levels through Lexington Medical Center Prisma and various private practices. Former students are working in Nucor Steel, D&amp;T Steel, CMC, Apex, and many others. There are many mechanics in our repair shops. There are businesses that all came through us, and many of you probably get your hair cut by our cosmetology students. Our county is second, the second-largest agricultural county in the state, and our agricultural programs have had a big part of that. Our students provide the services needed for our community to thrive and to care for each other. Their branches and leaves have an expansive reach, and they are strong and unwavering. As the fourth director, I could not be more proud to be part of such a great legacy with a strong reputation and a history of success, and I look forward to continuing to build on that success for years to come. Sorry that took so long.
And that's okay. We appreciate you. I would like to say that I had a daughter that did something through the technology. She was probably one of y'all's first females in y'all's firefighter class, the first one y'all first started. She thought she needed to be a part of that. She did set us all up a plan, and she still keeps her plan for her household, so hey, she learned something. Dr. Price, it's great to have you here, and I hope we see you more here and around and talking to us about how we can all work together, so we look forward to working with you in the future, too.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have our first item of all business is the amendment to the Lexington County Animal Control. Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The county amended its animal control ordinance in May. The town needs to adopt the changes, so they may be enforcing the town limits. The main changes include the following. Lexington County Animal Services will no longer allow the sale or rehoming with or without a fee of dogs or puppies unless recognized with a fancier breeding registration, Section 1032 and Section 1031. Lexington County Animal Services requires that a microchip registered with the owner's name, phone number, and address is implanted in any dog. That's under Section 1033. Lexington Animal Services no longer allows the sale or rehoming of pets at any flea market unless meeting the standards of a fancier Sections 1041(c1). Request from the county is attached along with the proposed ordinance for the town to adopt. I'll make a motion for final reading and approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is, any opposed? I think it's five to one.
Yes.
Our second item of all business is to reinstitute a 3% local accommodations tax. Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
State law allows a municipal governing body to adopt a local accommodations tax on charges for lodging. Accommodations tax proceeds must be used for the purposes indicated in South Carolina Code, Section 6-1-530. Per the latest data with South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office, approximately 28 counties and 75 municipalities have a local accommodations tax. The effective date is January 1st, 2025. Madam Mayor, I make a motion for final reading and approval of the ordinance reinstituting a 3% local accommodations tax.
Councilman Michaels makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it'd be five, and any opposed? One. Our last item of all business is a final reading of an annexation by Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kimberly Wingard Sumner and Wendy Wingard Gay own 34.3 acres on Cherokee Trail, and they have petitioned to annex the property. A 68-unit subdivision is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are Zone Protected Residential 2 and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended annexing the property with protected residential zoning. The Commission recommended classifying Cherokee Trail as a local road. As such, Madam Mayor, I move for final reading and approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? It's five to one. Okay? We now move to new business items. The first is from Councilmember Lyle. Noise ordinance modifications for fireworks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the September work session, the council discussed clarifying the policy on the discharge of fireworks in the town limits. Historically, our town has utilized our noise ordinance to address the discharge of fireworks, but we had allowed a lot of discretion to be given on certain holidays. Town council has expressed a desire to clarify that issue in writing and try to remove some of the discretion. A draft of that exception to the ordinance of discharging of fireworks is attached, and Madam Mayor, I would make a motion for first reading approval of the noise ordinance modification.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And that one is unanimous. The next new business item is from Councilmember Allen. Annexation of portion of Lexington County Tax Map 003500-03-12 located at 800 Mill Stream Road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Birch Home Builders own 3.38 acres on Mill Stream Road and have petitioned to annex the property. Three single-family dwellings are being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are Zone Protected Residential, Protected Residential 2, and Office Commercial. Mill Stream Road is classified as a collector road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their September meeting and recommended annexing the property with protected residential zoning. The Commission recommended classifying Mill Stream Road as a collector road. So I ask for first reading approval.
Councilmember Allen makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our last item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Williams. Rezoning Lexington County Tax Map Number 4326-03-001 located at 800 Hendrick Street, Protected Residential to Limited Commercial.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I have a written recusal form for Mr. Smith and another for Ms. Michaels. Ask that they be placed in the record along with the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Congress. Mr. William Graham has submitted a request to rezonate approximately .31 acres located at 800 Hendrick Street, which is on currently Protected Residential 2 to Limited Commercial. A single-family home is currently located on the site. Applicant is requesting the rezoning to allow an electric vehicle charging station on the property. Properties adjacent to this one are Zone General Commercial, Limited Commercial, and Protected Residential. Planning Commission reviewed this rezoning request during their September meeting and recommended to not rezonate the property. I'll make a motion based on Planning Commission's recommendation to not rezonate the property.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of denying it based on the Planning Commission's recommendation, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous with two recusing. Now we have, for council information, an item from Assistant Town Administrator Stuart Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, tonight I just want to, first of all, give a shout out to our Finance Department and the hard work they do every day on behalf of this town, but also to congratulate them on this year's budget document. This is the 2025 budget. It was submitted for consideration by the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada, for the Distinguished Budget Award. for the distinguished budget award. And for the 16th year in a row, we won that award. Now, this document has to meet certain stringent criteria that, and is reviewed by three individual reviewers who each score the document. And the document basically has to be a document that is a good communications tool. It shows that we have financial planning, that it emphasizes that we are accountable to the public, those types of things. And this year, we have a special distinction that I think is very important. It is for our long-range planning section that we added recently. Now, this is something we do continuously, plan for the long term. But we've incorporated that planning into the budget document, and each of the reviewers recommended that we get a special recognition for that effort. And so I want to commend Kathy and Chad in particular in the finance department for putting that together. But I think it's important that we emphasize that the town of Lexington is an organization that does plan long term. And those efforts are being recognized by nationwide and international organizations. And I think that's to the credit of our council for the support for doing this type of work and to the staff for accomplishing it. So we, our budget document emphasizes that we are accountable to the public, that we're transparent, and that we are an entity that values accountability to the people.
Go finance! Woo-hoo!
Go finance.
Absolutely.
Hey, Chief, can you handle this out first?
Mayor, he ain't gonna mess with her. He gets his check from her.
Thank you for letting us do that. Thank you to finance for all y'all doing. We appreciate y'all. Do we have any questions or comments from the news media? She's shaking her head no way right there. Are there any final comments from the public regarding specific agenda items? Are there any questions or comments from staff? At this time, I want to take a moment and recognize our new employees hired by the town of Lexington in the month of September. We have Michael Shealy in the Park Department, Tyler Watford in the Police Department.
It's Tyler.
Ah, this is Tyler.
It's Tyler.
Okay, Tyler, but I got Tyler on here, okay? Three in the Utilities Department, Jerel Burton, Wesley Thompson, and Travis Moreno. Welcome to the town of Lexington. We're happy to have you join us and be part of our town family. And I also have some announcements, that's some other neat things that's going on with kind of awards for us here in the town. The Old Mill Trail has been selected as a project winner of the American Planning Association of South Carolina's Outstanding Planning Project. It's an implementation award. This award recognizes the successful implementation of a plan adopted by the town. Efforts can include projects from public, private, and nonprofits with significant investment and/or oversight of the project. The South Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association, APASC, planning awards recognize outstanding efforts and achievements that advance the art and science of planning in the Palmetto State. So that's a big award, and congratulations to all the staff, especially Randy and everyone that's involved. And just some of our former leaders that had a big vision for doing this, too, many years ago. So this has been an ongoing project for many years. So I want to give them all recognition, setting from up here. Also, the Budweiser Clydesdales, which was a big, big event if you were not on the road that day, video produced in May has been chosen to be part of the South Carolina Underground Film Festival. It will be screened at the Nickelodeon Theater on Sunday, November 10th, during the 1:30 block alongside four other documentary films from acclaimed storytellers. The South Carolina Underground Film Festival is known for being the slam dance of the South, celebrating all genres of independent grassroots and international films. That's pretty exciting, too, because that was a big day in the town of Lexington, and we all just was overwhelmed with those beautiful majestic creatures that would walk through our community, and people just lined on the roads to see them. And here's some sad news for all our mamas, but the splash pads will be closed at all of our parks at the end of the day tomorrow for the season. I'm sorry, they will reopen Memorial Day weekend. So sorry about that, but hopefully we have some other fun things going as soon as we get the parks cleaned up and back to full activity. We can think of something else besides splash pad. But with that, do any of my council, do you have anything?
Give Michael credit for that video.
Yes, I'm sorry. We should give you all the credit. He is, Michael is, he stays in the background a lot of times, and he's probably gonna cut me off in just a minute, so. But I tell y'all, he's, he keeps me straight. He keeps me moving forward, and he is a perfectionist at everything he does when it comes to filming and taking his job serious. And we appreciate you. We really do. We thank you. We thank your team. Y'all do a great job together.
I appreciate that. I do, but my team, if not for them, we would not have been able to produce that video. So I cannot take credit for that. We all blessed our butt that day. Excuse me. We all, we all worked hard to make that video.
I think you even bossed me around that day, so.
I did.
You did that well, but I'll let you, because I, you just, you do a great job. You really do. Y'all all do. And we appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you. We appreciate it as well.
You may leave. So that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, October 7th, 2024. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.